Morning, colleagues in the room and greetings to everyone attending online. I'd like to welcome all delegations, in particular inquiry points and notification authorities to the TBT Committee's tenth special meeting on procedures for information exchange. Before we start, I'd like to apologize for the temperature in the room. I've been told it is due to energy and cost-saving measures. So please, everyone, feel free to take off your ties and jackets if you haven't done so yet. We'll try to make do today. This is my first engagement with the TBT Committee as the chairperson. And I'd like to, first of all, start by thanking all of you for the trust you've placed in me. For those who I haven't met yet, my name is Anna Viti. I'm from the Mission of Finland. And it's really a great honour and a pleasure for me to act as chairperson of this important committee. And I very much look forward to working with all of you during the coming year. So let's get started with the business of the day. Transparency is a fundamental pillar of the TBT Agreement and of the Committee's work. And this special meeting is an opportunity for members, and in particular, the TBT Inquiry Points and Notification Authorities, to share their experiences with the implementation of transparency provisions and procedures and to identify good practices for further improvements. And I hope we can make the best of this day with real, concrete takeaways for our work, both in capitals and here in Geneva. Just a little bit of background before we start. The TBT Committee had agreed back in 95 to hold these special meetings on a regular basis. The last meeting, the ninth special meeting, was held in June 2019. And all the materials related to that meeting, including the moderator's report and the recording, are available through the TBT webpage. As you know, our committee has been discussing transparency practices during these special meetings, but also in the context of thematic sessions, information sessions, and also the triennial review process, among others. In the last, the ninth triennial review, which was concluded in 21, the members discussed and adopted nineteen transparency-related recommendations. And this also led to the creation of a transparency working group in March 22 and with the objective to advance the implementation of these recommendations. So in this context, today's programme draws from and builds on all these previous deliberations. And just an overview of the programme for today. The first session this morning will focus on the ePing platform. The second session also this morning will focus on the operation of inquiry points and in particular for responding to queries and for commenting. And finally, the third session this afternoon will be a hands-on workshop on HS codes. And again, all materials related to this special meeting are accessible through the WTO TBT webpage. I'd like to also underline that this is an informal meeting and all delegations, whether present in the room or online, are really encouraged to participate, ask questions and share their experiences. So we hope we can have a very active engagement. For those of you who are joining on Zoom virtually, please don't hesitate to raise your hand to intervene. And if you have connection difficulties, you could also post your questions on the Zoom Q and A. And this will be managed and read out by the secretariat. So with all the practical information now, I'd like to move on to the first session of the day, session one. And the session is focused on the use of ePing for implementation and outreach. Before we start, I'd like to inform delegates that we have one additional speaker added to the speakers of this session. Last minute, this is Lucian Serna from the EU. So he will be speaking in the first session as the last speaker. Let's first recall that one of the recommendations from the ninth triennial review was for the secretariat to improve and streamline online tools and work towards a comprehensive centralized platform. Other recommendations suggested the use of ePing for sharing unofficial translations or disseminating comments and replies. The secretariat followed up on these recommendations and launched the new ePing SPS and TBT platform in July 22. And that integrated and improved upon the services offered through the five separate online tools. And the secretariat has been working on continuous improvements to the platform in light of the feedback received. And delegations have also had the option to attend some information and walk-in sessions over the past year. Now we'll take the opportunity of this gathering to get the refresher on ePing. And we'll also hear from a few members on how they have been using ePing. First, I'd like to invite the secretariat to provide us with an overview of the ePing services. So please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, and hello, delegates, TBT delegates, inquiry points and notification authorities. As mentioned by our Chair, I will provide an overview and an update on ePing services. While I will be making the presentation, it's actually, the presentation was prepared in collaboration with my colleagues Una Flanagan and Jane Greenleaf. So while I'll be presenting, they will also be supporting as needed the presentation and also monitoring the chat in case especially those online would like to post questions. Of course, we welcome interventions also orally, but if there are connection challenges, please do not hesitate. And before I start, I also want to underline that the ePing platform is the result of quite a collaborative team effort. And we work very closely, in particular internally, with our SPS colleagues and our IT colleagues. And I'd like to give a big shout-out especially to our colleague Ed Karan-Dang, who is really the brains behind the system. And it's thanks to him that we could advance so far and hopefully we will continue to do so going forward. And just to recall, we also collaborate externally with the UN and the ITC. And I'll get to that in a moment. And finally, another sort of general remark. There's only, there's a limit to how much you can follow and digest following a presentation on an online platform. You really need to practice it. At the same time, we feel we have a sort of our audience here and there have been quite some changes. So bear with us and see maybe this presentation as a sneak preview where you're not sure exactly what the plot is and what's happening. But if there are, you know, if it interests you, then please do follow up by joining one of our in-person training sessions this week or by following up with us separately for continued capacity building. Now, if I can ask my colleague Una to put the presentation on, okay? So, let's see. Yes. Quickly, an outline of what I will cover this morning. First of all, an overview of what services you can get from ePing. First of all, what does it contain in terms of data and information? And what are the main functions related to these? And then we will also have a look at ePing in practice. This will basically fold into the members' sharing of experiences, but we'll also share with you some facts and figures. So let's start. Just to recall, what is inside ePing? What is the content? You will find therein all SPS and TBT notifications going back to 1995. You will find all SPS and TBT-specific trade concerns raised, going back again to 95. And we have a new feature, which is you will also have access to metadata on all other SPS and TBT committee documents, and we will illustrate that in a moment. As I underline, this is sort of new maybe since the last training we provided to the committee. And of course, you can find the contact information of all SPS and TBT inquiry points and notification authorities. Plus, there are some add-ons like frequently asked questions. We have video tutorials now, which is also new. We have online video tutorials on how to use certain features of the system. And from ePing, you can also link up quite seamlessly to eAgenda, for those who have the rights, to the Trade Concerns database, which is sort of a house-wide broader source for trade concern, and also to PPRs. So now, having seen that, the contact, let's move on to see what are the functions. The first function we want to start with is that you can submit all TBT and SPS notifications through ePing, which, as you know, reduces errors, facilitates faster processing, and it also facilitates working together with all the other colleagues you have domestically. And a new feature within this ePing platform launched last year is that you can also update your information on inquiry points and notification authorities yourself if you are the admin, who have the admin rights as your country's inquiry point. And just to clarify, so each member can have one or more notification admins who are basically in charge of the whole notification submission process. They can update the information on inquiry points. They can draft and submit notifications. But importantly, they can also grant rights to draft or submit notifications to the WTO. So, and many members already have at least one notification admin, who then has granted rights maybe to their colleagues. But if you're, if you still do not have a notification admin for your country, please contact us so we can grant the rights. And that you do by contacting ePing@wto.org. I don't know if, Una, we can remove the... Okay. Sorry, the screen is a bit cut out. And just to highlight that this year, 100% of notifications are being submitted online on the TBT front. So thanks for collaborating with us on that. Now, and just a few, we added a few how-to slides to see if, you know, that may also illustrate to you how you do certain things. Again, practice is the best way to learn. But for example, if you say, oh, the email address of my inquiry point has changed, who updates this information? And I just explained to you, but very quickly, for those of you who can see their screens clearly, if you go to search, inquiry points, let's say we go to Chile, my neighbour, and if Alex has the admin rights, so he will be able to click on edit. And for TBT inquiry points, update as needed, the email address or the phone number, and click on save. So this is pretty straightforward, we hope. So just to close this section on submission of notifications, just to recall, there will be a hands-on session on submitting notifications tomorrow morning, starting at 10:00 in Room B. So we encourage inquiry points, notification authorities present to join that session. We are aware it's at the same time as the thematic session. So obviously, up to members to decide. But just to also recall that the thematic sessions are being recorded and they will be made available afterwards if you want to sort of divide your time, for example. And just to also say for those online that there will be further online sessions on submitting notifications. We had done one of these at the end of last year, and we hope to start with these in July. And another update for those of you who sort of operate more regularly with the system. Just a few weeks ago, ePing system was updated with the latest versions of HS and ICS codes. As you may know, these codes get updated on a regular basis, and we just caught up with the latest versions. So also while notifying, it's good to take advantage of this sort of most recent options for choosing HS codes, especially because some of the new codes relating to sort of vaping products or drones are, could be quite of interest to this committee. So please go ahead and check up and use the latest codes. And as we said, keep your inquiry points up to date and contact us for sort of if you need new rights or if you're leaving and you have to pass on the admin rights to another colleague. So that concludes the first of the three functions we wanted to focus on, which was on submission of notifications. Now, the second part is on basically what we called tracking committee work. And here, so this is for, in a way, all users with or without these admin rights. Although with admin rights, you can actually do a bit more than a regular user. So first of all, as you well know, you can receive email alerts and also now on an app, app alerts on notifications of interest to you based on your products of interest or market preferences. You can search all the notifications, trade concerns and SPS and TBT documents. And you can also view what we call member profiles and statistics on transparency. So we'll again illustrate a little bit for each, some key points. Just to recall, if we look SPS and TBT together, we circulate more than 6,000 notifications per year from more than 100 countries and on a wide range of products. So for example, if a member is interested in exporting to South Africa a wood product, you do not maybe need to, or if this is a private sector company, you don't need to follow all notifications. You can identify your preferences and receive email alerts or an app alert depending on your specific interests. And if you sign up, I hope all in this audience have already done so, but if not, please go ahead and do it. You can receive on a daily or weekly basis alerts and with a summary of all the notifications circulated. And what is interesting is that this summary also provides a link where available to the actual regulation or draft regulation that is being notified. And you also have an Excel file attached, which you can download for further processing and sending on. Now, a couple of how-tos again. For example, if you say, oh, our country exports chocolate to many markets, I'd like to find SPS and TBT notifications from the past three years, which may affect our exports. So how do I do that? And for that, you can, what we recommend highly is that you both search in the free text field, but also on the HS and ICS codes fields to make sure you cover the ground. Because as you know, our notifications sometimes have one or the other information, but not all. And I'll just quickly show you again. If you go to search, you can go to search notifications, put chocolate, put your TBT/SPS area, you could also do just TBT or just SPS. You can put a few member preferences if you want distribution period. And then we have more filter options. And if you go there, search more fields, there you should also put ideally for HS codes for chocolate, HS and ICS codes. And then you'll get some search results. Let's say the top one is from the EU. And if you click on the symbol, you'll actually have, without downloading, the pop-up of the notification text. So this is just a little journey looking for chocolate-related notifications. Now, let's do one on trade concerns. They say, you heard your exporters are complaining about difficulties complying with nutrition labelling requirements in export markets. You want to find out if other members have the same issues and whether they've come up in the TBT Committee. Again, just to recall, all concerns raised in the TBT and SPS committees are on ePing. So you can click on search trade concerns and select the parameters you wish. And then from there, it can also take you to the Trade Concerns database for some more statistics and connections also with those topics going beyond SPS and TBT. And this symbol you see there with the exclamation mark is important actually, because if you are on the notification page and you see this sign next to notification, it means that there's been a specific trade concerns raised on this notification. So again, very quickly, for those who can see, maybe not all, if you go to, in this case, search trade concerns, and let's say you put nutritional labelling in the free text, you choose TBT, you choose a time range, and then you would get a set of results. And then among the results, if you click on this little arrow, you get sort of more information on who raised, how many times it was raised, what's the status and so on. And if you click on the title of the one you're interested in, you also get to a page with more details on what was the discussion, what was the content of the discussion in the committee on this. Now, finally, so we searched for notifications, trade concerns. And now we want to look at this new part, which is still being fine-tuned, on other documents. By other, we mean documents which are not notifications. So let's say you'd like to find all documents submitted by the ISO, an observer of the TBT Committee. How can I find them? Of course, you can do this in docs online. But for those of us working more specifically on SPS/TBT, we thought we'd make life a bit easier. So if you go on the search tab to other documents, and I will show this to you. So under the search, you can go to other documents. I want TBT. And again, you go for further refinement to search more fields. And there's one on submitting observer organisations. And there you can click on ISO and you get all the documents submitted by the ISO. And again, if you click on a symbol of a document, you get the actual text of the document from that, from the ISO. Now, a final example for searching for other documents. I'd like to find all documents concerning transparency issued by the secretariat or the Chair. How can I find them? So this is, you know, a member may be submitting a document, but we also have submissions from the secretariat or the Chair through the secretariat. So again, I will show this. So if you go... Oh, okay. Sorry, we can stop. Sorry, I'll just go back to where I was. Yes.
United States, you have a question?
Yes.
You would like to pose. Go ahead, please.
Sorry, it took me a second to raise my hand. Thanks, Sarah, for the presentation. This is really useful with respect to the observers. Is this a new function of ePing that we can search? And I guess my question is, are the observers aware that they're, of this new function? And have they been working with you on it?
Okay. So all the, all the information we have here is extracted from docs online and it's from its metadata. So it's already publicly available, searchable, mainly from docs online. So all we're doing is extracting with a few parameters the SPS/TBT-specific metadata from docs online and putting it in ePing to facilitate search. So we, I have to admit, it's very, it actually went live on Saturday. And it doesn't change anything for the members, for the observers. But from now on, we will inform them that sometimes if they want to look from their perspective, historically what they've done vis-à-vis the committee, they will be able to access this.
Just like to say thank you for that. It's a great feature. The observers often have to give their interventions at the very end of the meeting. So it's nice to be able to search them to see what they had to say a little more thoroughly after the meeting. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the feedback. And in fact, this adds to our to-do list to send a note maybe to all of them. I've shown this sort of at particular events to particular observers as something they could use, but it just went live. So they kind of, a few of them were aware, but now it's live. And there are still some fine-tuning, there's still some fine-tuning to do. For example, both SPS and TBT committees have their own observer lists and some are the same, but they're not depicted with the same words like codex. So there is a bit of fine-tuning to do. So bear with us for further improvements on that. Okay. So, yeah. So another one that we wanted to illustrate related to finding documents, for example, related to transparency. Again, we have quite a few, and it's really not easy to find these in docs online because the term will show up in any places. And we want to find those that are quite relevant to transparency work as understood within the TBT Committee. So here, for example, you have again, search documents, TBT, search more fields. And here, if you put, there is sort of the option to select a member. So I could have selected the United States or an observer government or an observer organisation or the secretariat. For the secretariat, it's a yes or no. So if I select yes, and then there's a keyword list under TBT only. Again, this is being fine-tuned and it's not fully comprehensive and doesn't go all the way back to 95. But if I click there on transparency as an option, I'll again get a dropdown and then I can, we've done with the other documents, access any of them. Now, some of these documents are restricted. So you need to be, I think, logged on to docs online or to the WTO website, in which case you will be able to open them. So that sort of someone from the public can also go here and access the search function, but they cannot access the restricted documents or the job documents. So please have a go with the, with this new feature and let us know any feedback you have. So now, the final section I had mentioned was this sort of member profiles and factors and figures. So for example, I'll soon be meeting a delegation from Australia. And apologies and thanks to Australia for always being so supportive. And so we've picked on them. So I'd like to get an overview of their engagement in the committee, what their modifications, STCs, documents. Where can I find this information quickly? So I have to go one by one to each section of the tool. So again, I will show this. So if you go to facts and figures on the main page and member profiles, and let's say I click Australia. And then I can either do a cross-sectional overview of SPS/TBT or click on TBT specifically. And what do I see? I see for Australia, their inquiry point information, their notifications per year, their involvement in the Committee's trade concerns, a link to their latest trade policy reviews, TBT section, their statements of implementation, the agreements with other members, this is the 10.7 notifications, the acceptance, who has accepted the code of good practice from Australia. And going back to this issue we discussed with committee documents, you can also, oops, yeah, also from here, yeah, you can also quickly access all documents from Australia. And while we're here, beyond the member profiles, we also have some other facts and figures which are being updated live. And again, for SPS and TBT separately, but in a harmonised fashion. So first part, if you go to facts and figures, notifications. First part, let's say I want, I'm interested in TBT. You can see the number of notifications per year. So you can quickly check where we are with numbers because these keep changing every day. You know, we have our annual review documents, which is a very valuable source for last year's figures. But if you want the latest figures, you can just go here by type of notification. You can quickly see the top 10 notifying members. You can view notifications by development status, sort of by share of developed, developing and least developed countries. You can view the objectives of notifications circulated. And sorry, and you see where the top areas. And we wanted to show this to you because I remember in the last informal meeting in May, a number of members suggested that there should be sort of an ongoing tracking of the status of notifications and so on. So we wondered whether what is already available... So we wondered whether what is already available there is um of use and whether members would like to see more. Uh but this is already uh sort of, I think, a good starting point. And we will be curious to see if members are interested in um uh seeing something different here or more. Now, I just did a, before a few announcements and updates for the submission notifications part. And here, a few little announcements for this tracking committee work part. Um just to recall with single sign-on, if you have admin rights on Eping and E agenda, you can switch from Eping to E agenda quite swiftly. So that's something I hope you're aware of uh under the admin panel. Then there are, if you ask what is the biggest challenge for Eping, it is sort of this identifying product coverage um that the members, while notifying, identify the products covered clearly. And that when you're searching, you know how to search. And this is sort of an ongoing process, which will come up later today as well, including during this afternoon's uh session on HS codes, which was a request by the committee where the committee had asked the secretary to prepare, organize a workshop. And as mentioned, this other documents part is now accessible. It's new, it's being fine tuned. So feedback welcome on that part. Um so maybe I'll stop here because it's quite a lot of information and but we didn't want to lose this opportunity to highlight some changes and new features. Are there any questions at this point before we go to the communication functions?
Any questions from delegations at this point? If not, then we, we can move on. Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you. So we had the first pillar of submitting notifications, the second pillar of tracking committee work. The third pillar now is the communication functions. And here, I just want to highlight the key options. Of course, through uh Eping, you will find out swiftly the inquiry point information for any kind of request you have on a notification or independently. Then uh you have the option to coordinate at the national level using Eping. And Eping also offers an option to coordinate at an international level. And here, uh in the earlier part, we talked about the notification admin. And here, we refer to what is an outreach admin. Oftentimes, the same person has both admin rights. But depending on the member and their preferences, we can also separate the submission rights, the notification submission rights and the outreach rights because some members have these functions in different agencies. So the outreach admin, again, we grant, grants this admin right upon request, can activate or monitor what we call the national forum, can see all Eping users from their uh country or territory. They can post on the international forum and they can also chat with other outreach admins. Uh this is where the system gets uh again, a little um uh sort of advanced. And that's why we encourage you again, if you're interested, especially as an outreach admin, to use all this to join us uh be uh the next days. But just quickly overview of the options. If you want to coordinate at the national level, and this, again, as I mentioned, necessitates an outreach admin and many of you already have someone who has this right. So one option is this national forum, where you can discuss a specific notification. Each notification has next to it an option for a national forum. But it's only the outreach admin that can activate the national forum. But once this is done, they can reach out to all national users regarding a specific notification. Another option is for uh the outreach admin to use the Eping users list from their country to share information on notifications, maybe on TBT events and so on. So it doesn't have, this doesn't have to be specific to a notification. And again, a little how-to page. Let's say I need to quickly bring a notification on plastic packaging to the attention of my stakeholders and start a discussion on this draft measure. How can I do this using Eping? So you have three options. One would be you can send directly an email from the search results page. You can discuss in the national forum, if activated. And you can also reach out to some or all of the, your national users um and send an email to them. Now, just uh let's say we have this plastic packaging notification from a member and uh we still have a bit of time until fourth of July to submit comments. So how can I uh act on this? For example, if your national forum is activated, you can uh go to the notification, go to the national forum and uh post a message for all your users. And on the national forum, any user can post, but you'll always be alerted if there's something uh posted. Otherwise, you can also, from the search results page, uh share the notification with um one colleague, a group of colleagues. And if you have outreach admin rights and if you have created groups, uh which is another option, then you can also use sort of those groups. And then send an email message, which will be capital. So here, again, um this is for the, the third option. If you recall, there were three options. And this is if you want to contact, reach out to your national users. Another way, independent of notifications, is to go to your reach out panel, national users. Select the ones you want to contact. Again, you can also have groups here. Uh like say the national committee on uh TBT. And then uh you click on send an email and then you can draft and send an email. So that was the national level. So quickly, the international level. Um again, you need the outreach admin rights, which are very important. Because if you have interest in a particular notification, you can um the outreach admins can post questions, uh comments, uh translations. But all users can actually view them. There's also an admin chat, which is an opportunity for just uh inquiry points and outreach or um notification authorities to connect with each other in small groups. But I won't go to the details of that here. Now, quickly, how do I find those notifications which have received inputs through the international forum? Because I think those of you who are admins may have noticed there's been quite some activity um on this front. So to post in the, so here, I'll just quickly show it. If you go to search and notifications, search more fields and say, I'd like to see all information added to international forum, you will see the list of those with information added. For example, here we have a not, recent notification. And if you can see the sort of the, the bubble uh for uh the forum is highlighted. And that means that uh some activity has taken place. Ah, if you click on that, then you can see which members have actually uh posted comments. Uh and if there are any attachments, you can also see them. And in fact, all admins also get an alert when there's activity on this space. So here, for example, there were three members who posted some information. And as an admin, you can also do this. So closing this section, just to say, this is a pretty um lot of options. So we do have a hands-on session on this communication outreach functions on the tomorrow afternoon at two, room B. And of course, the more users are registered on Eping, the more effective the communication functions, the more possibilities there are to reach out to stakeholders nationally and internationally. And I think again, here, inquiry points can play a big role. And you may wish to consider activating your national forum or using the international forum for your queries, comments and translations. And if you want to understand more how it all works, please join the hands-on sessions. So I will, now this concludes kind of the Eping overview. I just have very few slides left on Eping in practice. So maybe another moment to stop and see if there are any questions.
Any questions from delegations at this point, online? I see none. Uh so let's.
Okay, let's finish. So just a few basic facts and figures. We now have over twenty-one thousand users on Eping and the public sector makes, constitutes the largest chunk uh with forty-seven percent. The private sector around forty percent. And we also have sort of the mix and the other categories. The other includes international organizations, NGOs and so on. And um we have three hundred twenty-two um individuals from hundred thirty-two members who have the admin rights, which, as I explained, are key to be able to take full advantage of Eping. And here are the top ten users, the members with highest number of users. And the EU statistics includes also the EU member states. Uh so this is just currently how, how we, how it looks. And just a final slide that, to recall that Eping is also a partnership with the UN Dessa and ITC from the start. And uh thanks to this partnership and the involvement of the partners, there is now a Portuguese version of Eping live, uh which you can access by selecting other languages up top. And uh through a project of the ITC, it's uh Vietnamese is likely to be the next language. It will be, this is just the interface, by the way, not the data behind. Then there's ongoing collaboration for capacity building. And um I'm also happy to announce that uh thanks to um funding from the UN and hard work of our former colleague Lotte, who, Lotte Drigue, who was called back for a few months of consultancy. Uh we now have these video tutorials you can access through the Eping website. They just went up. There are nine. Uh I think the one that's be put on the main page is how to register on Eping. But there are also other ones on some of the other functions I just talked about. And of course, as I had told you in the beginning, this is a lot of uh functions and options. And uh you, if you need more support, please join the sessions this week. We can also arrange an online call. Um or we can organize national or regional workshops for which uh we would ask you to also go through the ITTC. And finally, any queries, you can also write to eping@wto.org or there's a contact us link also on the main page.
Great. Uh thank you, Sarah, for a very useful uh update and a lot of practical information. And now I'd like to open the floor. Um if any delegations have, have questions or comments on the, on the secretariat's presentation. So I see no, no questions in the room and, and none online either. So it seems that this was a very clear uh comprehensive presentation. Um. If there are no questions at this point, um first of all, I'd like to very strongly encourage all the delegations to attend the hands-on sessions uh tomorrow for further clarifications uh or reach out to the secretariat, um should you have any, any questions. If there are no comments at this point, then we could move on uh to the second part of, of uh this session on member experiences using Eping. And um just to reiterate that while we have our presenters um on the panel and online, uh all the delegations are very welcome to, to take the floor, to share their experiences, uh make suggestions or post questions. So please uh take advantage of this opportunity. So we will start with our first speaker, uh who is Lahia Hambinga, manager, TBT notification authority and inquiry point from the Namibian Standards Institution. And I believe the, the uh comments will be online.
Yes.
Okay. Please go ahead, Lahia.
Good morning.
Good morning. Yes, we can see it very well. Thank you. Please go ahead, Lahia.
That the NSI is doing and still doing. So the NSI and is mandated as a national standard body with the mission of for the safety of consumers, protection of the environment and improve access to global markets. Um the um TBT the function of the NSI covers or supports the national and this is basically done in the preparation and according to the WTO we also do have which is responsible for providing the NSI testing, providing uh providing we also have an inspection center and we also do have a certification body. Apologies, we also do have a certification body which is responsible to encourage um stakeholders for their products to be certified and to ascertain that the product are of quality. We also have a metrology department which serve us the the NSI took part WTO TBT Transparency Champion Program. Now, Namibia was to scale up the application of and then to promote transparency transparency in regulation and foster champions for transparency. Now, this program commenced in October twenty twenty-two and was concluded in April twenty twenty-three. The first cohort consisted of twenty-six Namibia's action plan, the program focused on improved domestic coordination and capacity building for regulatory and now the Transparency Champion Program and enhance stakeholder the Eping platforms remain in paramount importance therefore the Eping training sessions we got from the Transparency Champion and sharing of experiences and network Transparency Champion and still essential to our daily activities. and still essential to our daily activities. Since, since the launch, pardon me, please.
Just a moment for me. There we go, we're back. As I was saying, the Transparency Champion Program.
Since the NSI is making sure or in educating our stakeholders. Since the launch of the program, NSI has successfully implemented various initiatives, such as engagement with both regulators and businesses. And as well as that, we went out and trained our stakeholders on Eping and the use of regulatory practice and and risk impact assessment. I would like to take you through the National Notification and Inquiry Point. Now, as I mentioned before, the NSI is the National Notification Authority and the National Inquiry Point. Now, what we have noticed is that there is a lack of coordination and cooperation between two various entities, ministries and agencies, which really impacted the implementation of the work of the National Inquiry Point and the work of the National Certification Authority. We also noticed that there is a lack of domestic coordination, both outside and inward. And in terms of tracking and commenting on TBT certifications disseminated. And therefore, with their system, EU-funded training project, which is part of the economic partnership agreement, that implementation is carried out. And the work of the National Board of Trade. Trade. Out. To. With various initiatives that were implemented to enhance institutional capacity of the NSI and contribute to the framework of technical regulatory framework in Namibia. Now, there were all the various initiatives that were implemented in accordance to ensure that the transparency provision and the work or the use or utilization of Eping
Eping in Namibia.
Is enhanced. With this initiative, the first one was to enhance institutional capacity for the NSI. And then the second one was to improve coordination and cooperation between government ministries, institution and private stakeholders.
Capacity building for both regulatory authorities.
So it is. On TBT requirements, the RIA, the GEOP, which are very key, key tools to ensure that transparency is beneficial to both stakeholders. Another initiative is the functional TBT framework. And the other one will be the overall compliance with the WTO. In hand. I am going to focus on the improved domestic coordination and capacity building for regulatory building stakeholders and business stakeholders, pardon me. Because this is the work that the NSI, together with the training and the National Board of Trade, work on to ensure that there is utilization of Eping and there is coordination and cooperation between stakeholders. The first initiative that we did when it comes to improve domestic is to ensure that that there is a trade. Because utilization of the Eping platform has not been common practice in Namibia. And therefore, it was very crucial.
Namibia, we want TBT better because it promotes Eping.
International coordination. So very first, we came up with a training document. And that training document is targeting, we made a training document specifically for regulatory authorities and another training document specifically for a business stakeholders. We went out, so far, five training workshops, which we completed in Namibia. And this training focuses on TBT requirements and the use of Eping.
To ensure that registration on Eping.
We organize, when we go out for the training, we have a dedicated person to register stakeholders on Eping. We, what we wanted to gain here is to ensure that we, we, we attain our objective, which is the use of Eping. So we give training on Eping and then we register people at the training session.
Session.
On Eping. For those, for those stakeholders, that will not have time to wait for them to be registered after the session.
So what we did, we developed a training, or we, sorry, we developed an Eping form. And that Eping form, we printed out and then we go with it.
To our sessions.
Sessions.
This is what we give to our stakeholders, those that do not have time to wait for us to register them on Eping.
The, 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 the Eping, the, the Eping registration.
Or the Eping registration on site is that we have a dedicated person to register the stakeholders in Namibia. And the form, now, now, those stakeholders that have time to wait for us to register them, we, in that same time that we're giving the training, we give the form, we hand out the registration form to the stakeholders and we explain the form or how can they complete the form. I will, there's a next slide where I will talk about the, the mandatory information.
That should be on the form.
Now, on that presentation, we emphasize on the Eping activation email. Because now, remember, this is the stakeholders that are not with you. So you need to provide them that once they are registered. They will, they should have an activation email that will come from the WTO for them to activate.
Activate that.
So we encourage the stakeholders to request for one. So we're going with them. On the Eping ones, they have their username and password. We have noticed that within those training sessions, we have increased the number of Eping users from twenty.
Initially, when we started with this, with this initiatives or with these activities, we had twenty.
National resources registered. As we speak today, we have one hundred and ten. So that basically means that we've increased, with this process, we have increased our national Eping registration to one hundred and ten with nine stakeholders. So this was, this is actually a very initiative that we see about on the work of Eping. So that is how, are you still able to see the presentation?
Yes, we still, very well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You are looking at the developed Eping form. This is the form that we hand out to stakeholders when we do the outreach. So on this application, on this one, we basically just explain what the, the stakeholder should ensure that the information are on the form. And it's very important that stakeholders have their telephone number. This is in case we cannot clearly use the email address because we're spelling, when you, when you can't really see the stakeholders' handwriting.
Handwriting.
You, you will then call the stakeholder to ensure that we have correct information.
Yeah.
On the HS and ICs.
ICs.
Not all stakeholders know this code. And therefore, we encourage the stakeholder to identify.
By the product, to be launched by one.
And should that information not be able to get back to the customer because we encourage them to request for a one-on-one, one-on-one training and then one-on-one activation. So basically, that is what we use to ensure that our stakeholders are registering. And request them for a one-on-one training. What you can see now is just a snapshot from the seminars that we previously did. And at this point, I think it's also important to mention that apart from the five workshops
Workshops that we did around Namibia.
We still continue and we have two more workshops that are coming in June and July. From all this, this is our key result. We have noticed a huge increase in the number of national Eping users. And we have seen an increase in the national participation. The platform, the, the use of Eping outreach forum, such as the international forum, the admin chats, the groups. As, as I've mentioned before, that we are part of the Transparency Champion Program. We also do have a Transparency Champion group chat on Eping and we are making use of it. And all this is done because of the activities that were done through the Transparency Champion through the training project, the work that we do with the National Board of Trade. We also have developed a national one, a national TBT mailing list. This, I think, we never had before because we are still at the end when it comes to TBT and transparency obligation. We have seen and noticed that a national outreach, we have increased awareness among our stakeholders. And we have established the National TBT Committee at the summit. Those are key results that we have noticed.
Yes, on the work that we are doing.
Come to TBT requirements and Eping. Now, there are key results, there are definitely challenges as I said, previously alluded to. There is a lack of coordination and collaboration with governments, with industry agencies. And there is an added ninety-quarter of EBT requirements.
Very, very challenging.
For lack of funding to ensure that the Notification Authority and the Inquiry Point carry out its activities. We have been, we have been assisted by the Eping project as of previously, but we still have a lot of work to do when it comes to TBT issues and requirements in Namibia.
Yeah, we would still like to promote awareness and train TBT standards.
On, on, on Eping and the requirement. And we would also like to promote the, the coordination of domestic and to read or react stakeholders.
Stakeholders on the notifications system.
And this is when it comes to the Eping because we need to ensure that stakeholders understand and they are utilizing Eping to ensure that transparency framework or provision obligations are met by Namibia.
Yeah.
That is my, is the end of my presentation. Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you very much, Lahia, for your presentation. Very interesting to hear about your participation in the Transparency Champions Program and how you use Eping and the various initiatives to develop further and also some of the challenges. Before I open the floor to the delegation's questions, I'd like to mention that there was a question in the chat whether the presentations would be made available. And yes, most of them are already available on the, on the WTO's TBT webpage. So now, I'd like to open the floor for any, any questions or comments regarding Lahia's presentation. Yes, there's one. Marian on the podium. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. And thank you, Lahia, for your presentation. I was a mentor for the Transparency Champions Program and I cannot be prouder of everything that you've shared with us today. And it's really lovely to hear your voice. But my question for you is this. Have you noticed doing the outreach activities to register Eping national stakeholders in Namibia? Have you received more contacts internally from your government? And possibly also as a result of registering clients for Eping? Do they contact you now when they see notifications? They might not know what to make of them or if they apply to the products that they're exporting? I'm just curious if you have any experience with further engagement with your stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your mentorship. By the way, I do want to introduce this is to Namibia translation. Thank you very much. Please continue with us, the Transparency Champions.
Very much. We have seen. We have seen a lot of requests that comes from our regulatory authority. We have, within those requests, we, we do have a national trade forum. We say Namibian trade forum.
Trade forum in Namibia.
And we have set with the national trade forum to discuss how we are
Yes.
Namibian stakeholders and our regulatory authorities to ensure that
We transpired.
Of communication with our regulators. And this is the initiative that actually comes out from our.
Which that we are coming.
Further to that, within our outreach, we had a dedicated outreach for regulatory authorities. And this is to educate them on the use or the utilization of ORIA and the good regulatory practices. Within that, we have also increased the number of our government ministries registering on, on Eping. They had an awareness on it, but we not, we not acknowledged on how, on the importance of each first thing and how to use it. And our outreach actually assisted in that ensuring that they are now coming up to use the Eping. Thank you. Did I cover that, Marian?
Yes, you did. That was perfect. So I guess I just want to make a comment and it might, might lead to another response from you. But it sounds like your regulators are using Eping as well. Whereas Eping, I think it's intended for exporters. However, I think we've talked about it before, Lahia, but you'll have to remind me. When the regulators are signing up, they might be doing something a little bit different with Eping. And it sounds like, I, I think that we talked about it overall in the Transparency Champions Program, that they might be looking at how other members are proposing to regulate in specific areas so they could get ideas about what to do or maybe even what not to do. Do you think that's accurate?
Yesterday, I think this is also something that we have spoken about. Something that we include in when we are providing the seminars to our regulators. What, what, what is the reason for them to use Eping if they are already regulated, technical regulations that are implemented or registered or administered by other countries? And, and I think one can actually look at it that Namibia might be in a mutual recognition with another country, with South Africa, for example, on a certain conformity assessment. And therefore, they, they then have to look at their regulations. And whenever they are setting up the regulation in Namibia, they look at their regulation because they're in a mutual recognition agreement. And therefore, the regulation should be harmonized, if not harmonized, be in correlation so that there are no duplication on regulations, both international as well as domestic.
And, and I think further to that, that.
And when we, we spoke about the, the, the translation of, 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 of technical regulations, I did seek your assistance on that. We, we, we're using that as our inspection and testing center because we would like to see how that can be implemented, the technical regulation. And see if we can do two or three things from the, and then implement it in Namibia. And see if we can do two or three things from the, and then implement it in Namibia. So the regulatory authorities are also using Eping to, 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 to cover leakage or, or on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Laia. Uh, this, uh, has been a good conversation. Um, if there are no further, I see Australia, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to make a brief comment to add to what Laia has already shared about the value of, um, regulator engagement with Eping from the Australian perspective. And as I will mention in my presentation during session two, we also encourage regulator engagement with Eping as a means of, um, obviously because of their subject matter expertise in an area of identifying notifications of interest for the purposes of comments. And so, uh, from the Australian perspective, we certainly don't see Eping as just something for notification and authorities, inquiry points and industry, but also in a really important role for, um, other aspects of government to be, be engaged with. Thank you.
Thank you, Australia, and thank you for bringing up this additional, um, uh, dimension. Very interesting. Um, if there are no further questions, uh, or comments by delegations, I suggest we move on to the next speaker, who is, uh, Alex Chaparro, Advisor at the Regulatory Affairs Division, Under-Secretary of International Economic Affairs, Ministry of Foreign Affairs, Chile. Alex, go ahead.
Thank you. Gracias, Presidenta.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everybody in the room. And good evening to those who are following through the video call.
Gracias.
Thank you very much. I would like to start by thanking you for giving me the opportunity to share with you in the room the experience that we've got, we've had as the contact point in Chile. And particularly with the new Eping platform, I will give you a brief introduction as to how the TBT WTO contact point works. And then we'll look at the role and counterpoints of the contact point. And then we've recently diffused Eping and I'll explain how that's worked. I would like to start by indicating something that's not on the screen, but which is crucial for this presentation, which is that between the eighteenth and twentieth of May, we had very important training organized by the WTO Secretariat of this committee for the agriculture and livestock, which, uh, department, which is the SPS TBT contact point in my country, as well as with the Under-Secretary of International Economic Affairs, which is the contact point for TBT. Here you have our website and our email for the TBT contact point, which is under the Trade Regulatory Aspects Division of SOBRA, which is the Under-Secretariat I gave you earlier. What are our responsibilities in terms of TBT? Well, we need to come out monitoring for TBT notifications published by the WTO, distribute notifications to interested partner, parties, manage Chilean notifications through any regulatory body in Chile. As I said, these are indicated, uh, these are placed within our Under-Secretariat. Then management comments on notifications from other countries, either from the government or the private sector, and the participation of Chile in the TBT Committee, as well as chairing a coordination of a national TBT Committee. This will be created by decree. As I said previously, we have as counterparts the Ministry of Regulators, the public sector, the private sector, and other WTO members through their respective TBT contact points. Right to our training, as I said, in April. In this national committee, we have an virtual agenda. And we usually notify virtually. That's our usual working method. And this is complemented by the Eping platform, but unfortunately, we haven't always managed to make this reach to additional parties who take part in the committee. So we were interested in trying to get in contact with the ministries that are involved so that rather than just notifying, they actively participate. As I said, we had a talk in April and there we were trying to create a habit in terms of creating a more proactive way of communicating with those stakeholders that are interested in the platform. As I said, we sent out notifications through Excel files or email, particularly of those notifications in PDF format. Sometimes this is tricky because we don't always have the notifications in the right format in Spanish. So this also makes it more difficult to make the notifications as translated, um, by the WTO Secretariat available to those who are interested. We always tried to distribute them. We always try to have early comments on this from countries. And we also try to do follow-up to the answers to the comments that we had sent to the contact points of interested countries. Currently, in the National TBT Committee, we had a meeting prior to this meeting nationally in the first week of May, and we received two requests for training on technical barriers. And particularly on the Eping platform, we will carry out this training perhaps at the beginning of July. This was from the Civil Society Council, which is a public-private organization that was created in two thousand and twenty. And then one from the Superintendents of Electricity and Fuels, which is part of the Energy Ministry. The training will probably take part, take place rather at the beginning of July. In terms of communication, we've created a banner. As you can see, we've got the institutional signature with that barrier on it, so that any email that we send has the banner with the Eping platform so that you can access it via a link and so that people can sign up to the platform. With that, I think that brings me to the end of this brief presentation and I'll leave my contacts for you. And I'm available if you have any questions or comments on what I've just presented. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alex, for your presentation. Good to hear how you use Eping and also some plans, uh, for the next steps. Now I'd like to open the floor again for delegations' questions or comments. If there are no questions, uh, at this point, uh, Marian on the podium, please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, Alex, I was just curious, um, what kind of feedback are you getting from your stakeholders? Um, is most of the feedback coming from your government or is it coming from your national, your domestic stakeholders? Or, or is it a combination? And is it critical feedback or is it, um, encouraging feedback about Eping? I'm just very curious about that. And is Eping a, a big change for Chile? Using that system to have awareness of what the notifications are?
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much for that question, Marian. In general, we have observed that as we have changes of governmental authorities because of changes in government ministers, which happens every four years, this creates changes in the legal departments and potentially they might not be aware of their obligations under the TBT agreement. I don't want to give you a particular name, but in many ministries, the person that reaches the top of the legal department doesn't necessarily know a great deal about the sector that we're working on. They're aware of their domestic obligations, but not necessarily their international obligations. So we always need to carry out this work in saying that notifications are an obligation and that we need to comply with this agreement in basic ways. For example, the sixty days for comments and making the comments within due time. Often people take part in this if they're working on something that's more practically linked to a specific type of regulation, but in all likelihood, in this training or in the TBT Committee on a national level, what we don't have is people taking part who are working on more specific topics. As far as Eping goes, given that many people also have regulations in the same field, it's a good way of them being able to inform themselves in line with their own interests. What a different country is doing in terms of regulation and to look up initiatives. For example, we've got the environment, plastic, pollution, reducing greenhouse gases. In all of these topics, probably our countries are creating similar regulations or that go in the same direction. And so they can use that as a source in line with their topics of interest. So we're trying to make this available so they can create their own user profile in line with their interests. And then in terms of industry and our exporters, we have something similar. So we try to distribute something that we believe will be of interest because it's perhaps a large market and a market that's perhaps regulating more than is strictly necessary. So we try to distribute the notifications from these markets. But as we know, there can be smaller markets. And they may focus more on certain sectors of production nationally. And so we're interested in them being able to create a user profile and being able to consult the documents on Eping in line with their interests. Or they can receive them by emails as they prefer. So as an answer to sum up, I would like to say that it's focused on both sectors. And we can see that there's a great need for it in both sectors, in fact.
Thank you, Alex. Um, now if there are no, uh, further questions or comments, uh, I suggest we move on to the next two presentations, the, the remaining two presentations. And, and if at the end we still have time, we, we may, um, look at any, uh, any remaining questions pertaining to any of the presentations in this panel. So without further ado, I would like to give the floor to Marian Hogan, Team Leader, USA TBT Inquiry Point Standards Coordination Office, National Institute of Standards and, and Technology. You have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Um, thank you for this opportunity. I want to thank my delegation of the United States, um, for having me with them. As always, it's extremely helpful to me in carrying out the obligations in the TBT Inquiry Point of the United States, which, um, as mentioned, is in the National Institute of Standards and Technology. It's the National Metrology Institute, um, for the United States. Um, I have been there since two thousand and ten. Um, I've actually been at NIST a bit longer than that, started out as a research librarian. Uh, some of you may already know that about me, but I'll just mention it again, just for context of who I am um, and where I came from, research librarian by training. Um, and then a TBT person by choice and because I really like it, I enjoy the work a lot. I think it's very interesting. I'm always learning something every day, um, uh, about it and get to meet people from all over the world and interact with them. And so I'm grateful for that. Thank you. So I just wanted to share briefly a little bit of our experience with Eping. Um, and go back a little bit to the, the Notification Alert Service that the United States had in place. It was a homegrown system. This was prior to, um, completely, uh, transferring over from that system over to Eping and encouraging our stakeholders to do that. Um, I mentioned that in part because I think our experience could be of interest to other members doing that. I think some of you also have, um, very robust ways of reaching your stakeholders. Um, but what we did with our system, it was in operation for many years. It actually outlived its life really in some ways. It was a database built in cold fusion. We referred to it as Notify US. That was how it was branded. And my predecessor did, um, an incredible amount of work, um, disseminating information about that system um, all over the country and really all over the world, um, as a model for how to make notifications more accessible to, um, our stakeholders, but also to other WTO members if they were interested. Um, but it, the system was mostly intended for US stakeholders. Um, and that system, we retired it in January of this year, January twenty twenty-three. In fact, I remember the date. On January ninth, we began using the system, uh, Eping system. But prior to doing that, we started communicating with the US stakeholders through messaging and through our inquiry point and also through other federal agencies that have trade obligations and trade stakeholders. Um, we started communicating about that, that transition, um, probably almost an entire year or nine, six to nine months before we, we ended the system and we gave warning. That system had about three thousand subscribers. And so what we did was we identified a subset of the subscribers who had logged into that system, uh, within the past year. And we started sending messaging, um, out to them saying, this system is going to shut down. Um, it's had a nice run and we appreciate your use of it. Please transfer to Eping. It's a very robust tool. Um, and we think you're going to like it. And so I was very surprised that we did not receive more resistance from our stakeholders. But I think that was in part because of some of the things that we did to make the transition a little bit easier. Um, one of the biggest things that we did was that we offered training in Eping, but we also assured stakeholders that the inquiry point and its functions would not, um, disappear. There were a few stakeholders, I think, who were concerned, um, that the inquiry point would disappear. Um, and that simply wasn't going to be the case. Um, we are mandated to exist. Um, that is actually written into US law that we, um, have this function and that it was, uh, put by the Secretary of the Department of Commerce. You have to operate this and you have to do this. So we knew that that would happen, but we had a feeling our stakeholders would be confused. So what we did was we started offering training right away on how to use the new system, Eping. And we gave Eping a little bit of time to make some adjustments. And before we started adopting it and suggesting that all of our stakeholders adopted and retiring the Notify US system. And in fact, it's interesting to me. I don't know if it will be as interesting to you, but I still have parts of that legacy system in operation because I'm almost a little afraid to let it go. I have our IT people at NIST who are asking me to please put in a, they call it a ticket, "Please put in a ticket and shut it down." I don't really want to shut it down. I'm a little sad to see it go. And I'm even asking a couple of colleagues, "Is there anything you need out of there?" And there's just radio silence. They're not telling me if they want or need anything. But I think that what that says to me is that we have now fully transitioned to Eping, for better or for worse. But we did, we did offer training in the use of that system. And Jennifer Stratman, our Trade Representative, she, the United States Trade Representative officially is the representative of the United States TBT Committee. I like to say that. And that we are here in support from NIST. And we help, we do carry out the transparency obligations on behalf of the United States. So what we've done is all of us, also my colleagues from the USDA, the International Trade Administration at the Department of Commerce, USDA is our Department of Agriculture. They have also reached their stakeholders, probably in creative ways that I don't even know about yet. And we have been training each other and training together. Some of the sectors that we've reached are the beverages sectors, the waste and scrap sectors. There's also medical association, medical technologies. People who are very interested, these are trade associations, are cosmetics. Cosmetics industry is very interested in Eping and how they could customize it. There's also food sector interest. Wine and alcohol beverage, that has been a very engaged sector. And then randomly, I hear individually from customers when they can't find something, which I'm always grateful for because then I usually learn about a private sector person I hadn't had any contact with before. For example, someone from Oracle recently stopped a trade association engagement and said they were going to start tracking these notifications for themselves. And that was a very interesting phone call. I, in fact, learned about some regulatory actions at our state level that were interesting. And so I find that that engagement has helped me understand how people are using Eping. I do feel that my understanding is a little bit incomplete. But every time we offer one of these sessions, and all of us have done this together, Jennifer has been present with us, which I think is extremely invaluable because I'm more of like a librarian sort of bibliographic person where I want to share with you everything. That's not necessarily very helpful to people who are in a very specific sector and they only need specific things from the system. So if we focus the training, we listen a little bit to what they have to say about what it is that they do, their customers that they're reaching. And then we're able to find specific examples very quickly in Eping of notifications that would be of interest. And then we can take them over to the specific trade concerns database that Sarah showed us today and show them how they can find information about the meetings and what was said on specific trade concerns that might be affecting their industry. If they wanted to go back and look at those later after the meeting, the minutes are publicly available. I mean, it really has revolutionized the way that I think our stakeholders are looking at TBT. And it also has taken transparency to the next level for us because now everything we do is transparent as well. It's not just that the information that the members are notifying is out there. It's also that everything that the United States undertakes in the TBT Committee, for the most part, is going to be available. And the stakeholders, especially the private sector, they're now aware of it and they can see it as well. We did, as I mentioned, we did have some slow adopters of the system. And I suspect that may still be ongoing. I encourage any, you know, anyone to reach out to us at any time. One thing I will share with all of you for awareness is that when you create a filter, and I do this with our stakeholders, they'll say that they are concerned, they don't want to miss anything. For example, on textiles. What I will do is I will create a filter myself in the parlance of Eping, a filter. And I will actually send a link to that person to say, "You can actually save this once you sign into Eping. You can save this and you can create the filter just like mine." Then we both have the filter. And then I will watch and see what my Eping alert looks like in the coming days to see if I see the same things that they see. I will say that sometimes I get very strange results. I did get Brazilian, from our Brazilian colleagues, I got notifications from SPS on textiles. I think that was my operator error. I'm not sure about that. I have to go back and look. So yes, they do behave strangely, but I encourage everyone to just play around with it. It's a very, it's a very interesting tool. And you learn about it every day and it's free. A lot of information is not free, but this is free. And it's very helpful. And I think it's helpful in ways that we haven't even yet imagined. It's pretty staggering. So I'll just leave my remarks there. And if anybody from my delegation has anything to add or to share, I would appreciate it if you would. Thank you.
Thank you, Marianne. Great to hear about your experiences transferring to Eping and the trainings. I'd like to open the floor for anyone who would like to comment or ask a question directly regarding Marianne's presentation. Would the US delegation like to add? United States, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I would just add to Marianne's presentation. So Sarah mentioned that we have about 21,000 users. And of those, the United States has around 1,275 at this moment using Eping. And our experience in training, our users, has been that it has to be very collaborative with the secretariat, of course. It has to be specific to the user's interest, like Marianne said. And we have to collaboratively keep thinking about how to continuously hone that training of the system. Because the system is changing. It's advancing as the WTO advances its thinking about it. And then we, as chaperones of the system, if you will, we have to always be communicating with each other about how to best convey those changes and the uses to to our users, including always using the system when we're speaking to them about the notifications and about the specific trade concerns so that they can see how practically transparent the system is so that they will want to use it again when they go to look for the next thing that they care about. So that's kind of been our experience so far. And we've been very pleased with the use of the system.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, we'll also add to what Jennifer mentioned and Marianne. That is great to hear that there is this new function where tutorials are available. Because one of the main questions that we hear when those trainings are provided by our inquiry point is that they would like to see some online tools that they could, you know, sort out to and in the form of tutorials. So it's great to hear that. That's new information that certainly will be well received by our customers. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those additional remarks. I'd like to ask the delegations in the room kindly to keep quiet so that we can all hear the presentations and answers better. Thank you very much. And now I give the floor to Alex. You have a question. Go ahead.
Gracias, Presidenta.
Thank you, Chair. I'd also like to thank Marianne. Thank you for that information. I've got comments about the fact of it is very interesting that you're concerned that organizations might disappear because of Eping. I have to say that we don't see that threat. I've got a question. This has to do with how we manage comments via Eping. Whether the US has received comments through Eping? Because I realize that sometimes the comments are on the platform. We heard that from Marianne. So thank you very much.
We'll take another question at this point and then Marianne can answer both at the same time. Brazil, please, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. We have some, two more like broad questions about this issue of notifications and transparency. So maybe the secretary could comment and also Marianne and other members. We, there are two instances which we regularly notify the WTO, but we believe that maybe we shouldn't. And I will explain. Well, the first case is when you have in Brazil, a regulatory process, we are on the preliminary stage of consultations. When there is, there is no draft regulation. But we, as a, for transparency purposes and for gathering inputs from constituencies and stakeholders in Brazil, we have a preliminary process of consultations before even having a draft regulation. And then, so the question is, should we use the formular for and notify the WTO in this case? What are your views on that? I think maybe there are different views on that, but we would like to hear from you. And the other instance is sometimes we are merely consolidating regulation in like five different regulations into one with no practical impact for trade or for any matter regarding trade nor in our domestic front. But we do that for facilitating facilitating trade even or facilitating the understanding of the regulatory process and the thousands of pieces of regulation that we have sometimes in Brazil. So in this case, we will also like to hear from you if we should use the notification formular for notification or not. Because we had here, we had already here in the committee, for instance, STC raised against us. And they, in some instances, they were clearly, this case, for instance, of merely consolidation of regulations for 10, 20 years ago with absolutely no impact for any matter on our trade. And then, but it seemed, it may seem that we were not being transparent nor providing necessary time for consultations. But there was no need in those cases. So at least in our view, we shouldn't have notified in those cases. But we'd like to hear from you. How do you proceed in those cases? Or the secretary, what the secretary would recommend in those two scenarios? Thank you.
Thank you, Brazil. I'd like to give the floor to Marianne first to respond to the two questions or three questions. And then perhaps to the secretariat to complement. And other members are, of course, also welcome to comment. Thank you. Marianne, you have the floor.
Thank you. So first to Alex's question, which to go back and review that one, that was the comments, receiving comments or submission of comments via the Eping platform. So the practice right now in the United States is if we have a government comment, that is, we submit comments from the government of the United States, we will post on Eping in the international discussion forum that we have submitted comments to another member. What we don't do is we don't actually share those comments publicly. So what we are hoping is that other interested members who wish to know what those comments are, or they may have a similar interest, or they think they do, or they may have also submitted comments and didn't mention it on Eping, if they would please reach out to the United States Inquiry Point to request a copy of the comments. And then we evaluate each request on a case by case basis. We do not post the comments currently in Eping. We have noticed that other members do sometimes actually post the comments that they share with other members in Eping. And I think that's a, you know, a great use of Eping, but that's not something that we are doing at this time. So if you see that the United States has posted comments, you'll just see a little blurb. And if you're registered as an admin for your inquiry point, you'll get a message saying, "A user from the United States has posted something about third-party notification." And then you'll know you can reach out to us using our contact information that's available in Eping to ask for the comments. And we'll evaluate it. And I promise we will be in touch with you to let you know one way or the other what the decision was. It's not my decision as an inquiry point. I have to put that out to our inter-agency colleagues and the agency that coordinated the comments to decide whether or not they'll share those comments. And sometimes there are reasons that have nothing to do with anyone personally. We may not have been able to reach a decision and time is ticking away and we didn't share them. So that's that. And then for the questions from Brazil, I am going to defer to the Trade Representative of the United States to answer that question. Those questions, I think they were very good and she can help with that.
Thank you, Marianne. And just to say with respect to what we're posting in the international forum on Eping, I think everybody has to think about it like we're all practicing using the system and finding out where our own comfort levels are as members. And we love when somebody has left their full comment in Eping. It really helps us. The Swiss started that practice and they might have something to say about it today. But then recently Cuba sent their comments and posted them to Eping. So that's a trend that's growing. But we're all practicing using the system and everyone needs to take their first step. It's like a building block system in my mind. With respect to Brazil's question about early notification of measures, we actually do do that. And, and we don't, we don't do it 100%, but in order to be a transparency champion, you have to take steps to, especially when you know other members care about a measure. So just recently on the voluntary country of origin labeling that we have, that is a question that is, you know, being discussed with other members. We did do an early notification of that public consultation that we had. And now we've also notified the voluntary measure as well. So when we know something is of interest to members in advance, we definitely try to make note of that and make sure that any early warning of that is notified. And then I just want to also note that with our close trading partners and ones we have frequent communication with, I'd like to think that like we have a good practice going with Canada and the United States that if there's an early warning of something that we share it formally or informally and discuss it as an early step before, like a pre-consultation to an STC. If we see something coming or we have differences or we're just a lot of communication is needed. So I think all of those things help to prevent a specific trade concern, you know, if you can take those steps. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would the secretariat like to add something? And also there was a second question on the consolidating regulations and how to deal with that. Sarah, go ahead.
Yeah, I can give it a go, but just to see first if any other member would also jump in, particularly with respect to the two questions from Brazil. Oh, yes, please, yes.
We see UK online. If we can give the UK the floor first and then the secretariat can come back to this. Please pick up UK.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, thank you, UK. We'll get back to your question later. So I give the floor back to the secretariat, to Sarah.
Okay, yeah, I'll try to address the two questions from our Brazilian colleagues. One was about cases where there is not yet a draft regulation. But at an early stage, Brazil, for transparency purposes, has been submitting a notification at the preliminary level. First, I'd like to just recall that there is indeed an obligation for members to publish a notice at an early stage, at the domestic level, regarding planned regulations. This is not to notify, but it's just if you This is not to notify, but it's just if you, I was just digging it out, it's actually 2.9.1. So there is an obligation at the domestic level which says, which also should enable interested parties in other members to become acquainted with the measure that they're intending to introduce. So I think it kind of follows on from this, that for transparency purposes, you'd like to make this more accessible. And I would say that, I mean, our usually answer is if in doubt, notify. If it's for transparency purposes, notify. And what you could do is in the notification format, there are provisions under which you are notifying. And sometimes members will do this. In fact, UK has done this too. That's why I was wondering if they would like to come in on that. Sometimes they will put other, so that it's clear. It's sort of slightly different than the routine notification of a draft regulation. So from a secretariat's perspective, we usually encourage transparent practices. And now that we have eping and possible alert options, filter options, the fact that we have more notifications, maybe in the past it was more paperwork, more information overload, and hopefully with the possibility to filter, actually get what you need, maybe the extra work also online. For those notifying, it's a bit easier. For those tracking, it's hopefully a bit easier as well compared to, let's say, the early days of the TBT agreement. And the second one about consolidating regulations. Again, I think it would make a lot of sense also simply because this way it makes it easier for interested members to find the last text of the regulation. You know, if it was consolidated in a new place, even just through a new hyperlink, I think it's very useful to clarify that for easier access to information and just so the reference is found more easily. And in a way, of course, as you suggest, if there was no impact, but it's more of sort of compiling texts in a different form, ideally before the STC stage, here I would say eping could be used if the notification wasn't clear enough for other members, that there was no substantive change. There could be, of course, between inquiry points bilaterally, some dialogue. And if there is some further concerns, eping could be sort of a pre-STC space to share sort of clarifications as well. So I think I'll stop there and see if there are further reactions. But yeah, on the secretariat's side, we're often supporting everything on the sort of extra work side for all concerned.
Thank you very much, Sarah. United States, is it on this topic? If yes, then please continue.
Just confirming that we also notify as other when we're talking about early notification of measures or any public opportunity to comment on an early plan for regulation.
Thank you, US. Australia, is it on this topic? Would you like to add? Please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to add that there is, on the question of notifying consolidations, it may, that may be a good opportunity if there was notification of the earlier version of the regulation to use, to use an addendum in eping. And that could reference the notification codes for all of the measures being consolidated if they were notified. And I think perhaps that may help with your concern that it could lead to STCs, because that could then highlight, and you could use the option for description to highlight that there is no substantive change to the content. It's just a change in format essentially. And so I think that the different types of notifications also help facilitate clarity on those points and may also then help it avoid getting it to the STC stage. Thank you.
Thank you, Australia. Now I'd like to give the floor back to Brazil. Please go ahead.
Just to thank for all the comments presented. Yeah, it's just that that would be the idea is, well, we want to be transparent, but at the same time, we don't want to, want to seem that we skipped stages in our regulatory process, because we always provide. I believe that we are proud of our practices in terms of transparency, because we always provide opportunity for comments. We publish the comments and we publish the answers to the comments. So for us is sometimes that some members already challenge us in terms of the not providing enough time for consultation. But they were in those cases that we thought that they were not necessary. I mean, consultations were not necessary in those particular cases. Just another brief note about the eping. As I talked to Sarah this morning earlier, Brazil is migrating 100% to the eping. We had a domestic toll called Alerta Exportador, our exporter alert, that we used, was a kind of a Brazilian eping already. And then now with the, we have a Portuguese version of eping being used in Brazil. And we will, we will give up this previous toll that we have and we will migrate 100% to eping. So it's just some good cooperation that we've been working with the WTO secretariat. I would like to inform members here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brazil. And thank you for your questions, which sparked an interesting, very useful exchange. And also thank you for the updates on your transition to eping. Now I'd like to give the floor to the UK online. Neve, please go ahead. Just start speaking.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair. Hello to everyone. We're really pleased to see us all getting together, discuss best practices and information sharing. Apologies, I am actually having some technical difficulties this morning, so my camera isn't working. I think from our perspective, we feel that we're particularly strong. I'm part of the eping platform. And we really hope that we can still go to these sessions like this, resulting in it being neutralized, more domestically in our jurisdiction for all to the world. I'll briefly sort of cut on Maryann's point about the United States and submitting notifications on each other. We do think where we can provide opportunities to comment where it's possible.
So we can incorporate feedback.
Particularly where we're aware that there is international interest in a developing regulation. We also try to make sure that we flag where measures may have that content. Like where that content doesn't necessarily bring about changes specifically, but for transparency, maybe in some instances, people then sort of notify under other. And we're very happy to discuss that approach in more detail with members if they find that helpful. In terms of the presentations this morning, it's very interesting to hear from presenters about how they've managed to build interest in the eping platform. We work a lot with our partners, particularly those who are in our platform and understand the best and how they can use it. But we would be interested to learn more if any members have any sort of insight as to how to build interest with stakeholders who potentially have net experience or exposure to TBT channels, particularly thinking of SMEs, for example. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, UK. Maryann, would you like to comment on Neve's, on the UK point? Or a question on how to build interest with stakeholders that have a little bit less experience?
So I think that's a good question. And I guess I'm sort of imagining what I would do from a practical perspective. What I would do, and I will bring in Namibia's form. I like the form idea, having them print out and fill out a form, because sometimes writing things down helps. The other thing that I would do, I think that people are concerned that they're going to be overwhelmed by the information or they're not going to understand the information that they're seeing. And that's certainly a possibility. Probably better to just say, that could happen. But there is a way, there is a way to just see what you need to see. So maybe first I would put myself in the shoes of the person who's trying to use it. You'd have to know a little bit about the sector that they want. Like, let's say that they are a shoe manufacturer. So then they would, there are certain things that they would need to look at, probably certain ICS codes and HS codes. I'd identify those yourself, because you're probably more familiar than they are, even if you're not very familiar. And then I would set up, do some searches, and you can send the link to your search results to them and then start to go back and forth. It's, we call that in librarianship, it's a question negotiation, question and answer negotiation, because sometimes the question you start with isn't really the question that they need the answer to. And so you might not know, you might need more information before you can help them set up the filters and the alerts to make sense. And then do, maybe set up a filter yourself that looks like something they would see, so that you will receive the same alert, so that you know what they're looking at each day. And if you, you probably have already done this, I'm guessing, UK. But if you set up a filter, the notifications that are not the main part of your profile that are in your filter for a specific type of search, they come into a separate chart in your eping alert. Look at that and see what that looks like. And if you get kind of results you're not expecting, your manufacturer would get that as well. And then you might want to reach out. It's a good opportunity to connect and just try to pare down what some of the confusion is, if you have a chance to do that. And if it's overwhelming for all of you, not just for your stakeholder or your SME, but also for you, you could consider setting up groups, I would think, in the national forum and letting them collaborate with each other. I believe Uganda has had experience with that. I don't mean to speak for Uganda, but I feel like I've heard something with them doing that. And that might be good to get them together so that they're helping each other, where you have one more interested than another, who could follow the same things and then consider even commenting. That's a whole other matter. But I hope that helps and I'm happy to talk about it offline too.
Great, thank you very much. I suggest we move on to our, to the last speaker of this panel, Lucian Sernat. He is head of global regulatory cooperation, TBT and international public procurement at Digi Trade at the European Commission. Lucian, you have the floor. You're speaking online, so please just speak up and start your presentation.
Yes. Hello, everyone. It's from Brussels. And I'm very, very pleased to be here with the eping communication. Very close, very well known. It's, I think that the fascination of making community, meaning a network of knowledge, experience, violence, policy makers on identifying problems and then finding solutions and creating the right one forward. So I am here in my, my personal capacity, my colleagues from the European Commission are in the room. Wait up. And another special. And I want to simply come to the attention of our organizers to share with you. You see here, the QR code with the background. I'm hoping from the slide, a link behind the diagram paper. If you see the details. My main objective today was simply to take stock of what we have achieved so far. Achieved of our collective. And then, you know. And then try to identify a few possible areas for improvement since technological progress and the type of tools we see now. Due in many areas, they could also be perhaps adaptations that are in the system. Now, I wanted to make a picture of the value of WTO transparency. My suggestion is to take a picture of the chart. It would be WTO, TBT, I think this is where you see the value of the system achieved so far. Let us, we're going to have some of the technical barriers to trade. One of the most complex regulatory areas for companies to navigate when they want to engage in trade across the world. Maybe several times higher than existing countries. If you can be $1,000, even on the cost of a nonprofit, more, if TBT becomes a real area, it can be double digits on cost for companies. And this is particularly the case for SMEs who may have an actual cost of complying, but also a cost related to the level of ignorance, I would say. Because only for a certain area are perfectly informed, the regulatory environment within a different export market. So where I think the value of WTO transparency is really crucial, because it facilitates global trade, I think, in trading markets annually. And we have, this is, I think, one of the most important dimensions I wanted to stress throughout my intervention is the number of companies, of millions of companies engaging in the trade, most of them are solid media companies. In such a complex world, perhaps, business, the WTO, who are, well, many of them are members who are engaged in their business, see what they value, what they need in, etc. And then transparency and predictability comes on top very frequently. It's like one thing from the WTO survey was, was recently created. So I'm responding to the WTO survey. They want the most business and information online on the WTO website. They value very much what exists already. They think it's a very star. They can get it better. But this is kind of picture of the WTO transparency in EBT, well, it's here, important. Well, you cannot probably see the names of your own countries here. They're not, you know, political lawyers. I think that it's also an evolution of the past. And one thing that you see immediately without a relation, that you understand that there is a very large, the condition, for some countries that are generating. But I think some, there is a, for a lot of countries in the country, that is to have a very large number of notifications. That for some countries, they're, frankly, when you look at the ones that are almost here in this chart, it means that any WTO members have notifications, some of them only a hundred notifications since the beginning of the WTO. Cannot really be the case, I'm sure, but in any country, there are more than a hundred notifications. In fact, it's not, there is a, perhaps a notification gap among those members. And despite that gap, we already have perhaps one of the best, if not the best, reported report about TBT data integration. That would be the latest numbers. I counted around 15,000 notifications for TBT. Because it allows everything we need, any words, any period. It's also important that the function of the WTO, so far, unfortunately, most neglected by the public action. The transparency and the function of this to regulatory cooperation, and that avoids litigation. So I just check out the number of TBT notifications. After the 50,000 notifications, I would be the user. The size is true to its actual numbers, right? So the size of the circle is proportional to the 50,000 notifications. This transparency is extremely important to, it's like sunlight. It's an essential element. And like sunlight, it actually has a very important, or if you want, a better system. It can be called transparency in any conception, when any interaction are avoided. At the end of the day, when you have very good transparency, most of the time, that is enough. But when more is needed, we have to interact with it. And if it's on the base of track, we can engage in regulatory cooperation. Is. The time that plays on the specific threat concerns, I think these are the ones in which the members engage constructively. The importance of dealing with FDC. Then, for that, this is a point in order of closing the 200, it's not acceptable. Multiple projects that are required currently in the United States, especially in this area that. That is considered by this committee. Around. And yet, I have to jump to the page of the slide. The question that moves in my mind and that is not left in my mind is. Millions of companies engaging in transactional trade, they are really at a loss of finding the right information for each. Labelable requirements. Out to the, those for the plants. Other requirements for food standard packaging or tools, any you name it. Here are all the buzzwords that it's. In the WTO notifications measured by the size of their frequency. So. There's a lot of technical regulation, but look at the variety of things that the company. Mini enterprises in particular, millions of companies engaging in trade, they need to have information correctly. A set before we get their products stuck in the wrong custom point, right? So. Especially with sunshine, that was a question. I don't plan that. Thanks to the. Policy brief, we have over 20,000, 20,000 users worldwide. But already only 40% are. As business users. Maybe the biggest discrepancy and the biggest untapped potential is not the 40% that you had to make. Other than 21,000. Just compared to the million companies that stand to benefit. For possible reasons, I would say, quite all excellent advocacy efforts I have witnessed today, which with great interest. Relatively speaking, there's another problem. But there is still a lack of awareness. I'm sure there are millions of companies that are never. Actually exported. Regular exporters. Nation overflow, which I witnessed on my own self, I invested in the system to some extent. With how old under 20, I would try to narrow down the kind of things we want to go on to see. Remember, we are having here a huge amount. Come on, interested in. Not sure that the filters are. Very quickly. I as a small company, I'm quite interested in making it to quite a big business decisions. Not sure it's stone uncalibrated, but there is hope. There is hope because I think. But you will be wary for a lot of quality. Can you use this new technology to improve to. The new version of Eping, we call. There are ways in which, with a little effort, interest from. Eping and systemic community to the next. Imagine. I'm just a few examples. Can't make this recommendation digest technology and train it not on group searches. But it's on the 50,000 plus WTO notifications. Then you have the statements and the importance from the TBT, then you have the actual. The legislation. Your experience of the WTO. Wonderful academic articles that are really targeted. On to the state of the art knowledge. And then if you throw perhaps also things like the harmonics in the box, I mean, some companies can relate. Specific product to the regulations. Even as an exporter. Needs to comply in multiple markets. So. Actually, I'm an optimist. In Canada, I'm a very optimistic in the potential of technology in general, but I think in this particular case. Being and TBT immediately.
Thank you very much, Lucian, for your presentation. It's good to take a step back and highlight the importance of transparency in the. TBT arena in general, and also thank you for your ideas on the potential of Eping. Would any delegation like to make a comment or ask a question to Lucian at this point? I see UK online. Could you please speak up, Neve? Thank you. Followed by the United States.
We endorse the importance of the pillar of transparency and for that data is very important. Facts and figures are very important and so this is provided a really helpful. On user coverage and giving us ways to explore. Eping can help us meet up to the obligations. And it's sort of clear that quite often when we're working with UK ministries on notifications, we find that highlighting transparency and that that is what. Underpins this process is a very beneficial way to. We wanted to sort of suggest that transparency alone is not enough to resolve trade barriers in our experience. And we think that transparency is a result of both the notification. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, UK. Now I give the floor to United States.
Thank you, Chair, and thanks to the European Union for the presentation. You know, I just a couple of notes for us. One is that, I don't know, if you, if you'd like to draw small business interest into this kind of macro view of Eping. I think one of the things that we'd like to offer is that it's better to look at annual notification. View versus the total number of notifications that have ever been notified to the WTO, because that 50,000. Notification number, it's a little overwhelming to a small business. Reading the article and, 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 you know, trying to kind of come to a more. Realistic view of what we deal with annually and the TBT Committee might be an improvement to the work and also. In, in terms of attracting attention to the use of Eping. So that's one. One thing we'd like to offer. Secondly, as I mentioned earlier, the United States has 1,275 users of Eping. And of those, about 25% are government and the rest are business. So for the United States. Oh, I'm sorry, business academia or other. So for the United States, we do have a larger number of business users than maybe other members. And we are in the top three users of the Ping system. And, and third, also I'd just like to offer that. You know, again, we're at the beginning stages of using this tool. And, you know, I know that there are conversations with the Secretariat about. How, how machine learning can offer improvements in the future. Most small businesses are in, in the US working through trade associations. We're not, we're not in direct contact with them. If any small business does contact us with a trade concern, we give it a lot of attention. To make sure that they are fully represented. So, you know, just a couple thoughts that sometimes depending on the country, there is more business involvement. It's better to be focused on an annual. Discussion of the, of the notifications as to not intimidate small business. And also that, you know, we're all in a learning process here using Eping. It's a new tool for us. Thank you.
Thank you, United States. I see Australia.
Go ahead. Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to make a very brief comment to support. The, what was briefly mentioned by the US in those comments just then, which is. The value of engaging with industry representative bodies as a useful bridge between in MSMEs. And, and government for this process, and it can help with just with. With disseminating information widely, but also disseminating information in a way that they may feel comfortable with. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. I'd like to give the opportunity to Lucian to respond, but please, I'd like to ask you to be brief because we are. Currently behind in our schedule. Lucian, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I, I realize that it took longer than I. Best improvements that one could do to such a system that is comprehensive in nature is to really tell an SME. When it's not tailored, that probably. 50,000, whatever number it is, with five clicks, let's say. They just go to the washing machines that you want to export from. You, Portugal, US, Brazil, to any other country in the world. If you select. The correct product, the correct market, and you want to know what are the current. Requirement. 15 years ago, if it hasn't changed, that regulation is as relevant to you as the one adopted yesterday. So I think the number of valid enforced legislation is what really matters. And what should be the message to a new potential user of Eping is now that you will have to read 50,000. This is a legislation you want to use the system and with a few clicks away, you will get the paragraph or the.
Thank you very much, Lucian. Now I'd like to give the floor to the Secretariat for a few brief remarks. Sarah, you have the floor.
Thank you, Anna, and all the presenters and all the feedback, which we listened also carefully to. Maybe a few quick reactions and suggestions. As I mentioned first, the video tutorials should be quite helpful for you in reaching out to stakeholders. Some are actually more for sort of what we call the admin side, but some like how to register, how to search should be useful. For your training purposes. And there are nine of them at the moment, and they're all under the more info tab under Eping. So please go check them out and give us feedback. And once again, many thanks to our partner, UNDessa. And our former colleague Lotta for having started this, and we may over time work on further tutorials. And work on sort of adding the additional languages, at least as subtitles to these. But what we would also like to do is a general video on what Eping is. There used to be such a video when it was Eping Alert, but it is quite outdated. So it is in our sort of to-do list to do sort of a private sector oriented Eping video in if anyone. And Una will be also spearheading that. So if anyone has creative ideas on how to work on such a video, that's something also budget allowing we would like to do. And just quickly, in terms of the way of finding the information you need. The system does help you to find specific sectors or products, but there are limitations due to the way also notifications come in. And that is why it's useful to do these filters and get maybe assistance from someone like an inquiry point who knows how to do them. And we will during the hands-on sessions show you how to do some of these product specific filters and how to save them and how to share them. So that's just a follow up because that's quite an important option for sort of the special. Sector groupings. And in fact. One, I mean, Lucian's dream is hopefully reachable, but it's kind of going to work towards that, but it may take a while. In the meantime, you will hear this afternoon how in the Secretariat, an internal network, we are working on facilitating, let's say. Notifying and searching better based on product names and groupings. So it's kind of. Not the super duper digital approach yet, but sort of to something that can help. And so hopefully that will also link back to this discussion we had, the update from our colleagues this afternoon. And finally, there is sort of a digital transformation effort at the WTO across the house. And to work something towards intelligence search. But again, this is sort of contingent on resources. And subject to maybe a longer timeline, but we take very much note of all the ideas and suggestions as we try to advance with the service.
Great, thank you, Sarah. So before wrapping up this session, I'd like to once again remind. Delegates of the Secretariat hands-on training sessions in the coming days, so please approach the Secretariat in the room. Or, or send an email to eping@wto.org. So that you can receive the logistical information. So I'd like to thank all the speakers in this first session, and now we will take a few moments to adjust the podium for the second session. Thank you very much. So, given that we are running behind in schedule, I would like to ask the delegates kindly to, to take their seats so that we can move on. And we would like to begin the, our second session titled Operation of Inquiry Points. With two sub-subtopics on responding to queries and comments and replies. We'll start with responding to queries. And I invite our speaker Marian Hogan from the US to make her presentation. And I'd like you to kindly stay quite brief, given the, the time limits. Thank you. Marian, you have the floor.
So I just want to take a few moments just to share with you a little bit about the inquiries that the United States receives from other WTO members. As you know, one of the core transparency obligations of the TBT agreement is to respond. is to respond to reasonable inquiries from other WTO members. And in GTBT 1 REV 15, you can actually search within the document to find out what reasonable inquiries are considered. But it's basically not asking a WTO and a TBT inquiry point what regulations or conformity assessment procedures are in place for an entire HS code. It would be maybe for a specific product, perhaps for cribs or for something specific, maybe mattresses or the flammability of mattresses comes to mind as something that's regulated in the United States, for example. But to then put that in the US perspective, we received last year, that was in calendar year 22, we received about twenty, no, I think it was thirty-six inquiries from other WTO members asking for things like, what are the requirements for importing cosmetics or food products into the United States? And we respond to those inquiries within a reasonable period of time. Generally speaking, there always are a few outliers where we're not able to do so for various reasons. But mostly, we respond within the first three days. But I believe five days is what what the committee decisions and recommendations, this REV 15 document that I mentioned. I believe that five days is considered reasonable for responding to those kinds of inquiries. And generally, we do. I remember when I first started answering questions like that, I was nervous about it because it seemed like I was having to look up all the regulations all the time. But there's hope out there for people new to the function that you can develop a body of knowledge of this and work with your regulatory authorities. I have done that in the United States. I've worked with our Department of Agriculture as well as with our Food and Drug Administration and also with other agencies, including this Consumer Product Safety Commission and even some of my metrology colleagues in the United States, even in my own institution, NIST, who do legal metrology, to to get information about packaging requirements, net weight packaging. And then we can actually refer to that knowledge later to respond to inquiries. And so we're able to then respond. The United States also has very good websites for its regulatory authorities. And so I suspect that many of you are just going directly to the websites of the relevant authorities to get the information that you need, and that's wonderful. Another another or another type of communication that we receive from other WTO members is the comments. We treat those comments just as if they were comments from US stakeholders. They are the comment periods for WTO members as well as domestic stakeholders in the United States. Those comment periods are exactly the same, maybe with one or two days difference to allow to allow us to submit the notification to the WTO. So we're monitoring the Federal Register on a daily basis. That's the the publication the United States uses to put out the proposed rules as well as the final rules of the agencies, the the regulatory authorities in the United States. And then we respond to those or we take your comments and we send them to the United States Trade Representative. We also submit them to the docket. The docket is something that's available through our public rulemaking website, regulations.gov. It is not maintained by the Inquiry Point. That's maintained by another federal agency, but we make sure that the comments are placed in the docket. And then we also share them by email with the regulatory authorities, the Trade Representative, so that there's aware that there's a question or a concern from another WTO member. What I think is helpful about this, it certainly isn't perfect, and I'm not suggesting I'm not suggesting that any system is perfect. What I find useful and helpful in dealing with other WTO member inquiry points is the element of predictability in receiving a form response from our inquiry point saying, we have received your comment. This is what has been done, and this is what the next steps will be. Other members, I have noticed, do this with us as well. When we submit comments, they acknowledge the comments and say that they have been shared with the regulatory authority. And then we're waiting for the responses and we share them widely. I know comments will be discussed, and so I won't go in too much into comments. But with regard to inquiries, I would say that our inquiry point is open to business and we're very accustomed to receiving questions about all kinds of consumer goods and energy testing requirements from other WTO member inquiry points. We're happy to work with you and to provide information and to direct you to the regulatory authorities who can help if we are not able to answer the question in its entirety and encourage you to come back to us if you still have questions after you receive our response. And I'll leave my remarks there.
Thank you, Marian. Very useful to hear about the functioning of your inquiry point. I'd like to open the floor for delegations. If you have any questions or comments to Marian's presentation. I see none. So I suggest we move to the second part of this session on preparing comments and replies. And you may also later on ask questions to Marian as well, if you so wish. And just some background before we enter into the session or the second part of this session. I'd like to start by recalling the committee's mandate from the Ninth Triennial Review to develop a good practice guide on how to comment. And with a view to kickstarting this work, our former Chair Anwar had called for volunteers who would be interested in contributing to the preparation of this guide together with the Secretariat. And I understand now that we have a group of seven inquiry points who have come forward as volunteers. And they are from Australia, Kenya, Namibia, Peru, the Philippines, South Africa, and the United States. So thank you to all of you for your interest and and willingness to take on this task. And I also understand that this volunteer group has come together virtually to come up with a set of guiding questions which will guide our discussion today, but also the structure of the future Good Practice Guide. So now I'd like to first give the floor to Eleanor Sanderson, TBT Inquiry Point and Assistant Director, Non-Tariff Barriers Strategy Section, Office of Global Trade Negotiations at the Australian Department of Foreign Affairs and Trade. Eleanor, please, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. And apologies for the length of my title. Hello, everyone. I'd like to start by congratulating the Chair on her election to the position and thank her for moderating the session so far. I also thank my fellow speakers for their contributions. It's a pleasure to speak to you today about Australia's approach to comments. I'm making this presentation as a member of the working group, which will draft the Good Practice Guide and comments based on members' input, including from today a session. So I want to encourage everyone to share their views and experiences today. Before I begin, I would like to provide some context about the Australian TBT Inquiry Point. Australia's TBT Inquiry Point is located in our Department of Foreign Affairs, or DFAT. DFAT does not have any regulatory responsibility for goods in Australia, but the trade portfolio serves as a useful and objective intersection between different agencies and departmental interests. And we benefit from the insights we get from proximity to trade law colleagues and other aspects of the trade and foreign affairs portfolios. Regulatory and policy responsibility for goods in Australia is spread across a range of portfolios at both central and sub-central levels of government. Our TBT Inquiry Point team is very small and has responsibility for notifications, comments, and representing Australia at the TBT Committee. It's generally just one to two staff and is currently just me. And for this reason, Australia is very conscious of the importance of ensuring the Good Practice Guidelines for Comments are prepared in a way which accommodates different capacities and resourcing. In line with the guiding questions for today's session, I'll begin with a general overview of the commenting process from an Australian perspective. Comments are an important part of achieving the transparency objectives of the TBT Agreement. It provides an avenue for accountability, gives members the opportunity to ensure they have all the information they need to prepare for regulatory changes and facilitates regulatory cooperation. Comments are not just for expressing concerns about a measure and can be used to better understand a measure. It's not necessarily a sign that something is wrong. As TBT Inquiry Point, this is important to share and convey to stakeholders, especially when sharing comments on Australian notifications with regulators to avoid defensive reactions. Of course, there is a role for comments to play in highlighting concerns too. Progress, or lack thereof, through comments plays a big part in Australia's decision-making about specific trade concerns. As Australian TBT Inquiry Point and delegate, I communicate to stakeholders that we will not raise matters as STCs if there has been no preceding bilateral engagement. I'll now talk about how Australia prepares comments, which begins with identifying notifications of interest. Australia focuses on notifications relating to our key trade interests, both in terms of goods and markets. We foster relationships across government and with industry to better understand what might affect them and, just as importantly, so they know who we are. This includes, through regular peak bodies consultations, DFAT holds with industry, which are not targeted specifically at TBT issues, but provide useful insights into industry interests. That said, as a small inquiry point, it can be difficult to analyze all notifications received. The more I can empower others to bring things to my attention, the better. We try and encourage stakeholders to register on ePing to hear about notifications directly and bring relevant notifications to our attention. It's good to highlight they can tailor subscription preferences by goods, markets, and frequency, so it's not overwhelming. This is something we've already discussed a fair bit this morning. I try promote ePing whenever I meet with stakeholders to discuss TBT. We also benefit from relationships with our DFAT country desks and overseas missions. Country desks are the teams responsible for tracking and managing our bilateral relationships. These teams are invaluable because they will often know what's happening in the area of responsibility, how it might affect Australia, if any other advocacy is occurring, and advise on the best way to approach an issue, or if other members might share our interests, so we can consider coordinating. When analyzing notifications, the main questions we ask are, how is it affecting or will it affect Australia's current and future trade interests? What legitimate objective is the measure trying to achieve? Is it more trade restrictive than necessary to achieve that objective? And finally, is there anything we don't understand or need to know to prepare for implementation? We also find it helpful to think about how a notified measure compares to our own measures. We're obviously unlikely to suggest a measure or elements of a measure are overly trade restrictive if we're doing a similar thing. If Australia decides to make comments, we have the policy area directly affected prepare comments because they will have the best understanding of what needs to be said. My role is to review and coordinate consultation if multiple areas have an interest. Then I, as the inquiry point, will send the comments to the designated contact for the notification via email. If the contact is somewhere other than that member's inquiry point, I will copy the inquiry point into the email for visibility. The Australian TBT Inquiry Point doesn't often receive private industry drafted comments as the policy areas will instead incorporate industry feedback into what they prepare. But if we do receive industry drafted comments, the process is the same. The elements to include in a comment depend on the type of comment being made. In general, Australia finds it helpful to try and include some information about our own systems for context, regardless of the type. In my review, it is always important to ensure any questions, whether they are clarifying or raising concerns, are clear and serve a purpose. It's also important to be constructive, which includes offering to work with the member and any suggestions if we have them. In reviewing drafted comments, DFAT trade lawyers are consulted when comments touch on compliance with the TBT Agreement. Country desks and missions may be consulted, as mentioned earlier, especially if cultural sensitivities may be involved in understanding the policy objective of a measure or if there are other activities happening with the bilateral relationship, which may affect how we go about commenting. Australia's approach to responding to comments is similar to our approach to preparing them. When we receive comments or notifications, the regulator responds to the notification and asks the draft response. And my role is to review the response and manage any coordination with other interested areas like trade lawyers and sometimes country desks, and I will then send the final response out. The key consideration for responses is ensuring that any questions asked are answered, any references to the TBT Agreement are correct, and the tone is constructive. If requests change something about the measure cannot be accommodated, it's important to ensure this is reasonably justified. Preparation of comments of responses, sorry, can take time. So Australia considers it polite to send to send acknowledgement of receipt when we receive comments, so the member knows that work is underway. This is a reasonable request for commenters to include. When we receive comments from someone other than the inquiry point, we think good practice to inform the member's inquiry point, confirm they're happy for us to respond directly to that party, and then copy the inquiry point into the response. Regional or international coordination may be helpful or even necessary when comments are received in in relation to shared measures. As an example, for Australia, this arises if the comments are received in a notification relating to our Food Standards Code. This is because Australia and New Zealand have a joint Food Standards Code. Even if we make the notification separately, they are generally prepared jointly. Responses to comments will be prepared by Food Standards Australia and New Zealand, which is a bi-national agency. Responses are approved by both the Australian and New Zealand TBT Inquiry Points before being sent out. And I work very closely with my New Zealand counterparts to still do this in a timely fashion. In conclusion, Australia's approach to comments is informed by finding efficiencies to manage workload as a small inquiry point and being guided by the expertise of our policy areas, regulators, and industry. I hope it has been an interesting insight, and I look forward to working with members to prepare the Good Practice Guide. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Eleanor, for your clear presentation on the commenting process from your side. And also thank you for the kind words of congratulations. I suggest we take the second presentation right right away, and then we can come back with delegations' questions and comments. So our next speaker is Bexy Sanchez, International Trade Specialist, USDA Foreign Agriculture Service. Please, Bexy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Chair, and I join Eleanor in congratulating you in your new role and wish you the best. I'm very pleased to be here, joining the delegation, the United States delegation to the committee. I've been participating in committee meetings for a number of years. And I'm very pleased to to share our experience in providing guidance to stakeholders, in particular what our inquiry point has as guidance for providing to stakeholders when intending to comment on TBT notifications and how useful that is, with the hope that this is, this will also serve for the purposes of encouraging some thought with the new work the committee is embarking on regarding a possible guidance on commenting activity. So I prepare a few slides if if you have it. Thank you. So we are pulling it now. Thank you. Oh, now. I work for the United States Department of Agriculture. I work for the United States Department of Agriculture, and we are one of the main users of the system for for commenting on a foreign TBT notification. And we really appreciate the services that our inquiry point offers in facilitating this activity. So I would like to refer here to the guidance that our inquiry point, the National Institute of Standards and Technology, that is housed at the Department of Commerce, has available to the public for stakeholders to take advantage of when embarking in commenting activity. So, and these are a few slides will show how the United States uses the inquiry point in this context. In terms of highlighting some of the main positive aspects of the commenting activity and that we see for the significance of this activity in terms of what, you know, can be drawn from it. I will mention in particular that through the commenting activity, we can identify unnecessary and significant potential barriers to trade. Our stakeholders, by doing that, really work on identifying those barriers at an early stage where comments can be provided and those can be avoided. This opportunity that is offered through the notification when it's submitted to the WTO is the official one that our stakeholders can take advantage of and which is really the one that is set under the agreement. There may be many other ones that could arise prior to the notification opportunity, but in this way, our stakeholders take advantage of the official opportunity set under the agreement and take advantage and implement the agreement through the transparency mechanism before they become final. When comments are submitted and as a result of that, the regulations or the proposed regulations are improved, the transparency mechanism acts as an important tool for avoiding potential barriers to trade. So as I mentioned, our inquiry point, NIST, has available to the public a guidance for US stakeholders on commenting on notifications made by WTO members to the TBT Committee. And this guidance is available to the public. There is a link that is provided here and in this slide by clicking on it, and I would like to refer to the main components of that guidance. So it contains an overview. Another section talks about preparation and submission of comments. It highlights the importance of the deadlines. There are also other portions of the guidance that refers to the procedure that follows the submission of comments, and there are other considerations. The overview that is provided in the guidance document contains the following elements. The first one, it provides for an institutional framework. It refers to the obligations as there are set in the TBT Agreement and also refers to the institution in the US that is in charge of the inquiry point. And for that is the Office of Standards Coordination at the National Institute of Standards and Technology. It also offers a detailed overview of the transparency mechanism under the TBT Agreement. The guidance also refers to who are the customers that this guidance will be serving as providing guidance to or providing some information that is useful for their customers, and those are US stakeholders. US stakeholders are defined as private sector, public sector, standards development organizations, conformity assessment bodies that are domiciled in the US. The overview also contains information about what is the specific submission details that need to be included in the comments. And for that, it specifies a dedicated mailbox where comments should be submitted. There is a big portion of the guidance that talks about Eping. And for that, it talks about how we rely in the US in Eping and the importance for US stakeholders and users to use Eping for identifying notification and following up on other aspects as offered by the tools that are included in Eping. Then there are some comment sharing considerations that Marianne already talked about before, where it is stated that comments are submitted to the National Inquiry Point or notification or entity identified as responsible for receiving those comments in the notification format. But the intention is not to share the comments to the whole membership or to the WTO secretariat as some stakeholders may perceive. So the intention is to share those with the interested or the concerned national inquiry point. There is an interactive function that now our inquiry point is using, which, as Marianne mentioned, we alert other inquiry points that comments have been submitted. But that, at least at this time, that we are sharing the entire comments. The other aspect that the overview mentioned is there are some considerations for non-US entities and submitted comments on US notifications. For that, the guidance refers non-US entities to reach out to their own national inquiry points for searching procedures on how to proceed and submit comments through that institution. And regarding submitting comments on US notification, there is, the guidance talks about the need for following up on the information that is provided in the notification format for their country interested stakeholders to submit comments on our notifications. An important part of the guidance talks about the preparation and submission of comments and is divided into two main aspects. So one of them talks about the formal sort of requirements, information that the inquiry point is seeking a stakeholder to fulfill when they submit comments through them. And another ones are substantive aspects. So I will refer first to the formal aspects. The very first one that is highlighted is the information for submission. There is a dedicated mailbox, as I indicated before, that is mentioned here, is USA TVT EP@nist.gov. That is the main mailbox that is used for the communication activities with the inquiry point. Then it mentions about the need to inform or include the address for comments, which is a national inquiry point, so the agency responsible, the commenter address, notification symbol, or the need to identify the measure with the symbol that it is recorded in the WTO documents. And it talks about the need for submitting the comments at least two days prior to the deadline, although the inquiry point offers some flexibility on that. And for notifying measures, and there are some other considerations, the main aspects that this portion highlights is that for non-notifying measures, there could be some help that is offered by the inquiry point in terms of trying to identify within the system, the Eping system. And if we are sure that the measure hasn't been notified, to reach out to the trade agencies that can be helpful in addressing issues that have not been notified to WTO. Then, in terms of the substantive aspect that may be of interest to the group, the guidance talks about the need for clearly setting what the issue is that we are referring to in the comments or that the comments need to or would like to address, and there should be a statement in that regard. Then a rationale should also be included in terms of what are the aspects that we are questioning or the main message that we would like to convey to the country, the notifying country. There is a good portion of it that refers to the trade value because it is important. We're talking about significant measures or measures that have a significant trade impact. So it asks for the trade value of the potential and potential trade impact of the measure. It suggests also to include what will be the consequences if the measure were going, was going to be implemented. Suggestions of alternatives that are considered less trade restrictive. Then being concrete in terms of what we're asking for the country. So by that, the guidance refers to edits that can be included in the measure to avoid unnecessary barriers to trade while the legitimate objectives are still being met. Then there is an important part of it that refers to the international standards context that it is critical to include to see what the departures are and how, why those are in terms of the measures that are being proposed or if they are not international standards, for example, in the area. It is important to give that context to the country. Then again, in terms of what we're asking for, there is a specific mentioning of clarification of the text as one of the main elements that are included in the commenting activity. Another one is related to the transition timeframe. Sometimes this is a big concern or a very common one for our industries in terms of the adjustment that is necessary for adapting to the new circumstances, the new regulatory frameworks. So that is mentioned as well as one element that needs to be included if that is the case. And then there is a reference, of course, to the decisions and recommendations adopted by the WTO TBT Committee because they contain important information that is not in the TBT Agreement per se but has, that have been developed by the committee members through the years in terms of, for example, timelines, reasonable interval for adjusting to the new measures, international standards, et cetera. So that's something that the guidance include clearly. Then it's... Oh, I see. So you want to just...
Can you just very briefly?
Yeah, again, yes, the comment deadlines are highlighted, as I mentioned, and I think that, as I mentioned before, in terms of when they should be submitted to the inquiry point. They also highlight the importance of transmitting comments through the inquiry points as the main institutions for communication exchange under the TBT Agreement. And it talks about other agencies like the Department of Agriculture where I work that are actively involved in commenting activity. I just mentioned here very briefly what are elements from our experience could facilitate stakeholder engagement, and it's having this institutional infrastructure, clearly timelines, the procedural terms of reference, how to communicate with the inquiry point as referenced in the guidelines, having a guidance for drafting comments, as mentioned in the substantive part of the NIST guidance. The inquiry point outreach activities are critical, are very useful in facilitating this engagement. Of course, that is also has to do with the capacity and availability of the inquiry point or the institutions that are carrying this out. In addition, could be also trade agencies and the leadership of those trade agencies. In our case, our trade agencies really put emphasis on the importance of the commenting activity from the practical aspects of it to help our exporters and also to help implementation of a TBT Agreement and take advantage of the transparency mechanism. And we act under the leadership of USTR.
Thank you very much, Bexy, for a very rich presentation on your perspective on the commenting activity. Now, unfortunately, we won't have time for any comments or reactions or questions. At this point, we've already used up the extra time that the translators have kindly offered us. But we could offer a short period in the beginning of the afternoon session for about 15 minutes for questions or comments, should there be any. So if you agree, we will open the afternoon session with some Q and A. I personally will not be here, but Secretariat will be able to manage the discussion. So hopefully, our speakers will also be present. So I would very much like to thank all the panelists of this session for their excellent presentations, and hopefully you will be able to be present in the afternoon, should there be any questions. And as this work is also feeding into the guide, I would also suggest that the group of volunteers would provide an update on the progress with the guide at the next Transparency Working Group meeting, which is scheduled to take place after the summer break. So wrapping up the second session, I'd like to thank all the speakers throughout the morning and also for all the delegations that intervened from the floor with your inputs and questions. It has been a very good exchange. Just a brief reminder about the afternoon session, which starts at 3:00 PM. So this is a workshop on HS codes organized and facilitated by the Secretariat. And important reminder for everyone to bring along a piece of chocolate for the afternoon session and everything will be revealed this afternoon. And just before I close, I will make a brief report on today's discussions during our formal meeting later this week, but a more comprehensive report of today's meeting will be circulated in the coming weeks. So thank you very much, colleagues. The meeting is closed.